The Plainville Board of Education. Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Wells, would you lead us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would now like to introduce the Elementary Honors Choir. And they will sing a song for Board of Education Appreciation Month led by Mr. Greg Woolford.
(Singing) Oh, beautiful, your spacious sky, your emerald rain of rain. Your purple mountain majesty, above the blue and plain. America, America, God shed His grace on me. And tell my earth its brotherhood from sea to shining sea.[115.54][115.54](Applause).
Thank you very much, boys and girls. That was excellent. I also want to acknowledge Veronica Brendel, who's an elementary music teacher, and her sister, whose name is going to slip because she changed her name recently.[134.72][134.72](Laughter). Ms. Sporanza, I'm sorry, Marilyn Sporanza. Sorry, Marilyn. Thank you very much. Excellent job.[144.41][144.41](Applause).
All right, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move Item 6B, March 14th Events Update, to Item 2D.
I second the motion.
All right, have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to some special presentations. I'm going to turn over to Dr. Brummett.
Thank you very much. I would like to begin with our Everyday Hero Recognizations for the month of March. I'd like to have Janet Field join me at the microphone with Caitlin King and Jacob Leggett, along with Vicky Truzinski.[195.12][195.12](Laughter). I think Jacob's just a bit excited about tonight. Jacob's Journey, which is led by Janet Field and Caitlin King, as well as Janet's husband, Chris, who couldn't join us this evening, he is in Florida, was nominated by Special Education Director Vicky Truzinski. Jacob's Journey is 100 percent nonprofit motorcycle run based out of the Bristol Elks or BPOE 1010. The first event took place in the summer of 2009 and has been growing strong ever since that time, raising funds for special needs activities and events. This is their 10th year. Jacob's Journey started the year after their grandson Jacob Leggett was born. Jacob has Down's Syndrome and attends Toffelon School. He is the host of all the activities sponsored by Jacob's Journey. I understand that Mr. and Mrs. Field are very thrilled and appreciative of the Toffelon faculty and staff who've made his educational experience there so positive, and many of them are here this evening. In addition to the motorcycle run in July, they also host a breakfast in the spring and a Christmas party in December at Jersey Joe's in Southington to raise money for scholarships for people with special needs, programs in Plainville and the neighboring towns that support people with special needs, as well as students pursuing degrees in special education and related fields. Last year, they gave $500 to Mr. Batchelder to support the Elementary Unified Sports Program. This year, the district plans to use the donated money to support our new Go Kid Go Program. I'd like this time to thank the Leggett family, Jacob, Mr. and Mrs. Fields, and Caitlin King, and present you with our Certificate of Appreciation. Thank you very much.[303.12][303.12](Applause). (Laughter). All right. Terry and Alex are custodians at Linden, and Linda Pauletto owns Cortina Tile. They were nominated for Everyday Hero Award by Barbara Friedman, Linden Street Arts Teacher. Come on up, everybody. Here's what Barbara said in her nomination for the Everyday Hero Award. "I would like to nominate Alex North, Terry Archer, and Linda Pauletto from Cortina Tile as Everyday Heroes. They have been my heroes in my efforts to complete the tile memorial plaque for Betty Bocus. Every Linden scholar and staff member has created the tiles that became Betty's garden. Alex and Terry prepared the cement board for me so that I could attach the tiles. When I made a mistake on the measurements, Alex and Terry helped me brainstorm solutions. They attached the border tiles and used their creativity and expertise to add decorative moldings and finished edges to create the beautiful finished product. I went to Cortina Tile to look for tiles to create the colored border around the white tiles. Linda Pauletto and I talked about Betty, and Linda shared her admiration and appreciation for Betty Bocus. She ordered the tiles. Unfortunately, they were out of stock. It took a while, but Linda tracked them down and even cut the tiles for me to create the perfect border. When I went to pick them up, she informed me that she was donating the tiles. Betty Bocus was an amazing woman who gave so much to Plainville community and to our schools. I was blessed to have these three people show their appreciation for Betty by helping me to complete this memorial to her." And we're going to show a few slides momentarily. I'd now like to ask Barbara Friedman to come up and say a few words about the project.
I didn't realize I wrote so much in my nomination because it sort of covers it all, but I'll talk fast. In December 2016, we lost Betty Bocus. She was much more than our state representative. She was a friend and a tireless champion for our town, our school, and our children. To honor Betty, the Linden School staff and scholars created a plaque that shows the programs Betty fought for that help us learn and grow. Every staff member and scholar drew a flower on the tiles that make up Betty Bocus's garden. When the tiles were fired and ready to be assembled, I called on two gentlemen in our Maintenance Department that I knew would have all the answers, Terry Archer and Alex North. Terry and Alex cut the backer board and advised me on how to lay and grout the tiles. Enter Linda Pauletto at Cortina Tile. I needed bullnose tile for the edges, and, like you said before, she shared her admiration for Betty, and when the tiles were on back order, she tracked them down in Texas. When they came in, Linda had the tiles cut for me so they would fit perfectly. And then she donated the tiles. We needed a few more, and by the time they came in that summer, I was unable to work on the mural due to health issues. That's when Terry and Alex really became my heroes. I was not able to return work until January. I stopped in when I could and stayed in touch as we discussed how to compensate for the measuring mistake I had made. Alex and Terry used their construction expertise, creativity, and artistic eye to create a masterpiece. They mounted the plaque on a larger piece of wood, then they attached the cut pieces of the border tile. I was afraid to look, but they put the small tiles in the perfect place. They then added the moldings, those beautiful moldings, so that there were no raw edges. They made it look like a beautiful picture frame. We decided to install the plaque next to the doors that lead to our reading garden courtyard. The plaque can also be seen through the windows from the outside of the building. Thanks to Terry, Alex, and Linda, Betty's legacy will be part of Linden Street School
I would like to take this moment to personally thank the Board of Education for all they do. This is Board of Education Appreciation Month, and tonight you heard from our Elementary Choir singers, Honors Choir singers, as well as received some small tokens of appreciation around the table tonight. More than ever, the job of the Board of Education is extremely difficult. What initially promises to be one meeting a month goes far beyond that all the time. Plainville's Board is very special as they frequently are in our schools for special events, PTO meetings, and even instructional rounds. My colleagues across the state comment on how involved our Board of Education is within our schools. During these difficult budgetary times, it is more important than ever to sincerely thank the Board for their dedication to the staff and students of the Plainville Community School District. I want to thank you very much. A round of applause.[752.69][752.69](Applause). And then I just wanted to make a few comments tonight about the student walkout or walk-in. I just want to give a little historical perspective and put out some factual information. Several PHS students respectfully and appropriately approached Mr. Medick a few weeks ago about the possibility of a walkout. This is a national movement that developed in response to the recent school shooting in Florida. These students were clearly upset about the events in Parkland, Florida, and felt compelled to do something. My office spoke with legal counsel, who specifically advised us that students have a First Amendment right to express matters of public concern, such as school safety, as long as they express themselves in a non-disruptive way to the educational process. After Mr. Medick and I conferred with legal counsel and the Board of Education, it was agreed that the students would need to decide if they were going forward. But if they did, we would help to ensure it was a safe and respectful event. Shortly after the initial meeting, discussions waned about the walkout. However, PHS administration worked collaboratively with my office and the Police Chief Katania to establish a safe plan if the event were to go forward. Last Friday, Mr. Medick checked in with the students. If you recall, last Wednesday and Thursday were snow days, and we won't talk about tomorrow yet, and they indicated that they still intended to convene a walkout. It remains unclear how many students will be involved. This morning, Mr. Medick spoke to some student organizers, and they indicated they would prefer a walk-in event. In other words, they would like to walk inside the building rather than outside. Therefore, around noon today, Mr. Medick notified all PHS parents, staff, and students about the event in a letter that was sent out via school messenger. I also decided to send out a district-wide school messenger as I had been made aware of some significant misinformation being circulated on Facebook. I'd like to read a few excerpts from that letter now. This is around the second paragraph. "The student organizers have made us aware that on Wednesday, March 14th, they have invited any current Plainville High students who wishes to come together to show their support for this national movement to take part in a 17-minute walk-in. Students who choose to participate will report to a location within the building that has been designated for this event, most likely one of the gymnasiums. The walk-in will take place for 17 minutes, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:17 a.m., Wednesday, March 14th, which was scheduled already as a forum day at the beginning of the school year. Forum is the name of the Plainville High School Advisory Program, and the day has a modified schedule for this pre-planned advisory activity. Participation in this event is the decision of each individual student. No student is expected nor required to participate. Participation is voluntary. We encourage parents and guardians to speak to their child or children regarding their participation or nonparticipation in the event. Students who choose not to participate in the walk-in can remain in their scheduled classes. Whether a student chooses to or chooses not to participate in this event, we expect all students to embody and display mutual respect for their fellow classmates, peers, teammates, neighbors, and friends. I have personally asked," and this is Mr. Medick," "all students to use the tragedy at Stoneman Douglas as a moment to reflect in order to make our school great by becoming more inclusive as a school, community, and to end negative behaviors and put a stop to bullying." So the letter goes on to describe a little bit more about the day, but I think that's the gist of it. "So during my communication with parents today, I encourage them to come to the board meeting tonight if they required or needed additional information. I am glad to see so many parents here this evening and hope my remarks and the communications sent out earlier today were helpful. Thank you." And that concludes my beginning remarks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Brummett. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Brummett? No, anybody? You can ask it later under her report if you like. All right, next, we just have some minutes we need motions for.
Madam Chairman, I request that we approve the minutes of the February 12, 2018 Regular Business Meeting.[1041.63][1041.63](Audio cuts out). And also, if you want to do all of those together, request approval of the minutes of the Special Board Meeting on February 8, the Budget Meeting, and also, we approve the minutes of the Special Meeting, the Policy Subcommittee Meeting on February 21, 2018, and the Special Board Meeting of March 1, 2018. I approve that all those minutes be accepted as circulated.
All right, have a first and a second. Does anybody have any corrections or revisions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, next, we're off to our citizens' comments. If you wish to speak to the Board of Education, you can just step up to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone?
Members of the Board of Ed, thank you for taking the time to hear our comments tonight. And I will apologize right now. When I am passionate about something, I have a tendency to speak very loudly. I'm going to remove the microphone.[1116.13][1116.13](Laughter). So if I do have the tendency to get loud, you guys understand why, okay? But I don't think, in my days of Boy Scouts and so on and so forth, and making presentations, I don't think anybody is going to have difficulty hearing me. I hope not anyways. So thank you very much for allowing us to take the time. Anybody who knows me knows that I'm an ardent supporter of not only the First Amendment rights, but the Second Amendment, Third Amendment, Fourth Amendment, all the way down the list, okay? I don't choose which ones I want to agree with and which ones I don't want to agree with. That's the letter of the law. I agree with them all. With that being said, I'm here to discuss my displeasure in the Board of Education allowing our students and the school to take part in a politicized movement. The history behind this movement, for those of you guys that aren't aware of it, the history of this movement was organized by, according to CNN, Empower, which is a youth organization, which is organized, it's a youth organization that was organized from the Women's March. Women's March is a far-left-leaning radical organization whose agenda is to stop Donald Trump. Now, I'm not here to speak for Donald Trump or against Donald Trump. What I'm here to speak on is the displeasure that I have in the Board of Ed allowing the school and the students to become politicized. By authorizing space, time, and energy into this march, you're allowing the students to support the women's organization and the Empower organization, which are far-left-leaning organizations. We all know that the Empower organization was originally funded, students and teachers across the United States will walk out of their schools and universities to honor those lives lost at Stoneman Douglas, and press lawmakers to pass strict gun control laws. So by allowing the students to participate in this, you are allowing them to participate in this politicized speech, okay? I for one am for all four of the First Amendment rights. I will argue that point until the end of the day. If this means that much to them, allow them the opportunity to do this on their own time. If they wanted to organize and meet in the parking lot of the high school and walk down to Town Hall or walk to Hartford on a Saturday or on a Tuesday afternoon, by all means, go ahead and do it, and I would even support them in doing so. But to do it here in the school is politicizing the entire school. One of the things that was mentioned was that it's going to be completely voluntary. Those students that want to participate can participate; those students that don't want to participate don't have to participate; they can stay in their classes. But according to Dr. Brummett's email that came out today, and I do apologize for all due respect, I love you at the Rotary.[1285.33][1285.33](Laughter). This is going to be highly structured and supervised by our administrators and teachers. Those who don't want to participate will attend the normally scheduled classes. Well, if the normally scheduled classes have a teacher who wants to participate, does that leave the students in the room by themselves? And if not, are the students being asked, the ones who don't have a teacher in the room, are they being asked to go into a separate area for those that don't want to participate? And for a little history, that's what the Nazis did to the Jews; that's what we did to the Japanese during World War II; that's what Mao did to the Chinese; that's what Stalin did to the Russians, okay? Those who don't want to walk the line would be moved into, shuttled into a different area. So my concern is the scheduling of this thing; my concern is the intent of this thing. I'm willing to bet that most of the students who are going to participate with this don't understand why they're participating. If they don't understand why they're participating in it, they shouldn't be participating in it, in my opinion. If they all understand that it is a march to support gun control measures, then fine, let them figure that out. But it also states in the handbook that people aren't allowed to walk out for any reasons. And there's a whole list of class disruption, cutting class, leaving class without permission, and leaving school buildings and school grounds, and what the punishments are for those. Punishments are stated anywhere from a two-day detention to a one-day suspension. If the students want to exercise their First Amendment rights, and again, I will support that at any time, then they also need to understand those ramifications. If you or I or anybody else decided they didn't like whatever conditions were, and you walked off of your job, chances are you'd be fired, okay? Even if it was for a political protest. Students need to understand, if they're walking out of classes, that they need to understand there's responsibilities to that as well. If they walk out, they should have to pay the price. And I can speak from this, from experience. If you go back into the papers and you look back in 1983, I was part of a protest at Bacon Academy in Colchester. Bacon Academy in Colchester, their rules, the building was built back in the 1940s; there was no air conditioning in the rooms. Their rules stated that we weren't allowed to wear shorts. So here it was in May, 90 to 100 degrees inside the room, and we were sweating. So we decided, as part of the policy, the Board of Ed had dictated that there's not to be wearing of any shorts. So we all knew what the ramifications were, that if we wore shorts to school, we'd be sent home. We also knew that if we returned our shorts back on, we would be suspended for one day. So what did we do? We wore shorts to school. We all showed up; we wore the shorts; we were all kicked off campus; we all walked across the street; we all organized; we went back to the school, all of us together, and we all were, we were all handed our one-day suspensions. We continued to walk across the street until the news showed up, and we affected change. That year, the Board voted to allow people to wear shorts in school. If you want to affect change, do something that's meaningful to affect change. As an example, call an assembly, and I have questions regarding the naming of the day and which day it is. Call an assembly, have everybody participate, bring them down into the auditorium or into the gymnasium or wherever, have 17 minutes of silence, read off the names of every one of the victims that was lost, that was tragically lost. And at the same time, present an opportunity for these kids to learn. Have them go through an exercise, an exercise that I thought of, that I think is a wonderful idea, hoping all the people would support me on this, is run a computer model matching people who eat lunch at the same time, okay? Randomize that, randomize those numbers. So now, me and you would have lunch at the same time, okay? You hang out with your friends; I hang out with my friends. I don't know who you are; you don't know who I am. But we've been matched, so now, for the next 17 days, we eat lunch together. We learn about each other; we talk to each other; we find out about each other. And at the end of the 17-day period of time, we each write a paper, four or five pages in length, about everything about that other person. What makes you laugh? What makes you smile? What makes you angry? What are your life's ambitions? Where do you come from? Okay? This way, you have now created a friend; you will most likely have a friend for life, okay? And you will also prevent that person from being bullied, because now he has other advocates. This whole idea of separating kids, those who want to participate go here; those who don't want to participate go over here, you are now fostering an environment for kids to get picked on. And we all know that part of this whole tragedy down in Florida, as well as Newtown, as well as other places, are all about kids getting picked on, picked on and belittled and basically tortured. Kids are terrible. We know that. I was terrible; we are all terrible, okay? But we know that bullying happens. So if you want to affect change, do something that's going to make a real difference in people's lives. Don't walk around the gymnasium or walk around the track, and we all know that we're going in the gymnasium because there's going to be two feet of snow. So do something that's meaningful. Do something that's going to affect change. Don't do something that's meaningless about a stupid gun law that's not going to make a difference one way or the other. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Greg.
I just wanted, I mean, Dr. Brummett can certainly answer any of your comments if you like, but, you know, from what our understanding is and what the administration has told us, is the kids are doing this as a way to honor the 17 people that were killed, and this is their way to do that. And the Board is supporting the administration's decision to do that. So, you know, I am sorry that that sort of goes against what you're saying, but we feel like they are doing it to the kids that want to participate, fine; the kids that don't will be in class with a teacher; they're not going to be left somewhere or shuttled into a cafeteria by themselves. And this is, it's going to be done safely, in an organized manner, on school property. Kids are not leaving; they're not going without permission, so therefore, there's no reason to reprimand them or give them suspensions. So that's everything that the Board understands from Dr. Brummett. If she has anything else she'd like to add, she certainly can.
Let her speak first, and if you want to come back up, that's fine. Yeah, the point of clarification I want to make is that the children who are not participating would remain with their teachers, and the teachers will be in the classrooms conducting class. They will not leave to participate in the event. We have other staff on other duties, and administrators will take care of supervising the kids. So there's, let me no shuttling of children to other locations. Either they voluntarily go to the room that's been designated for the event, or they stay with their assigned teachers and proceed like a normal school day.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carroll, if you wanted to say one more thing, come on. If anybody else would wish to speak to us after Mr. Carroll, please just walk up to the microphone.
The other issue that I take into consideration, and I want the Board to take into consideration, is the Pandora's Box is being opened. If you're allowing the kids to walk out, walk in, whatever you want to call it, for a cause, which we all know the reason for this cause is, yes, it's honoring the students down in Florida, and I won't take that away from them, but it's also to support gun control measures. That is why this national organization was developed; that's why the cry was put out over a month ago for this cause, was to press Congress for gun control. If you allow the students to take part in this politicized process... If you allow the students to take part in this politicized process, you're allowing students, you're setting precedent for students in the future for whatever cause they seem to want to support. If you have a handful of kids who are in the environment club who want to protest TILCON's expansion of the quarry, they are now going to be given that right to do so. And if you don't allow them to do that, you're taking away the First Amendment rights. If you want, have a group of kids who want to walk off and argue about $15 an hour wages, they are going to have the right to do that. What you're doing now by allowing this to happen is you're setting a precedent for future opportunities for students to be able to walk off campus for whatever means they see, so long as they can organize a group of kids and they can plead to the administrators. I just think it's a very dangerous slope to adhere to. I think it's setting a very dangerous precedent, and I just, I can't support it in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hello. My name is Hannah Lennon. I'm a senior, and I am one of the student leaders involved in this walkout. And I wanted to say that this walkout is a measure of school safety. We do have a right to walk out because we do not feel safe. I understand Connecticut, I'm very proud to live in Connecticut where we have very strict gun laws compared to those of Florida where anyone can go walk in and buy something. Connecticut, they are stricter. But things have happened. Sandy Hook has happened. There are things that we cannot control or do anything, and this is something that we can do something about. We want to promote safety, and we can do that by going out and supporting this. We are also standing with the victims and those affected by Stoneman Douglas, and this walk-in is showing that. We really stand with it, and we are not only, sword, activate, well, using our First Amendment right, but we are actively using it to promote something, safety in the school. So we are safely doing something that can provoke change for us. So the bigger picture issue may be gun laws all across the nation, and everything has to start somewhere. So we might as well start with schools and doing something. If we don't do something, no one else will. We have had thousands of shootings since forever because we have the most lax gun laws. So we want to evoke change, and we are going to do that with this walkout. It may not be something that starts out huge, but it's somewhere. So, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Hannah.
Hello, my name's Sean Blake. I have a student in the high school, middle school, two in the elementary school. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you to those that have gone before. I would like to discuss the scheduled event that will take place at PHS on March 14th, as everyone else is. I would like to thank Dr. Brummett and Mr. Medick for sharing the information with parents and attempting to ensure that the event is as safe for all students as possible, and the thought and effort that has gone into those considerations. I do have several questions that I hope can be answered at this time. To ensure equal opportunities for all students, I would like to know what criteria was used to determine that this event should be allowed during the school day. Two, when will the criteria be published to ensure that all future student causes can organize in the same manner with school endorsement that is free from repercussions for disrupting the learning environment, as is the case with this event? Three, if there is no set criteria, how will we ensure that potential opposing or minority views are respected and allowed in the future? And lastly, have you done a risk assessment on the repercussions of selective enforcement of the stated rules listed in the handbook? With this precedent, allow for future challenges to the stated rules and potential litigation exposure. Those are my questions that I would like to have addressed either now or in the future. And then just one other point that I just thought of, so thank you for your piece. But as was stated by the administration and, you know, by the chair, this was an event to honor those students, which I think everyone could get behind. But it was just made clear that one of the organizers of that has declared that is not the sole cause. This is a politicized event for gun control as well. And so if that is the case, should it be reconsidered? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. If you can give your email to Dr. Brummett, maybe she can get the answers to your questions and send them out to you?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, anyone else want to speak to the Board of Education? All right, come on back up, Hannah.
I don't have anything else to say, but Nick Costantini, who was really the leader of making this whole event, he's at play rehearsal right now. He wanted to speak, I know he has notes, and he just has, he's very organized. He said it would be five minutes, so.
Are you saying he'll be here in five minutes?
Yes, so if we could wait or...
Well, we certainly have a couple more things we can go to, and we can get him to come back at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if no one else has anything else to say, we'll move on. Our council liaison is not here this evening because she's at a budget meeting. She did send me some notes, so I'm sorry, I did not print them. So let me just read them really quick. All right, so she says the town council is beginning their budget work sessions this evening, and they'll be doing it probably through the end of the week. Her report is brief. "The council voted unanimously to approve the trail study and send forward to the next phase of development. They received a letter from Lennard Engineering regarding the proposed quarry expansion and future water storage reservoir. The study was completed as part, as a result of the TILCON plan to expand their quarry operations." So that's all she has for us for now. All right, and next, we're on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite our three elementary principals to come up. Andrew Batchelder, Wheeler principal, Lynn Legoye, Tofflon principal, and Paula Schu, principal of Linden Street School. They'll be doing a presentation on the state of our elementary schools. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing us to share some highlights. We get to do this each year, and it's a highlight for us when we get to do this. So we, tonight, we'd like to share what is happening in the elementary schools of Plainville. You already heard this evening from some of our young singers, which I hope you've enjoyed. But there's much more going on in the elementary schools each day. So tonight, we'll give you a quick peek into what we do. Here's a list of some of the activities that we're going to be highlighting this evening. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about mathematics and number talks. Our district-wide elementary goal is to lift the level of math performance. We decided to approach this by finding strategies to improve students' understanding of how numbers relate to one another. So we adopted a two-pronged approach, the use of number talks and a focus on problem solving. So in number talks, instead of asking students to memorize procedures, we expect them to reason, to make sense, and to construct strategies that are built upon numerical relationships or number sense. I think you will see, and you will see all of these exhibited by the students in the video of these second graders who are participating in a number talk with their teacher.
Show me that you're thinking and you're getting an answer. Nobody get a different answer than 75. Megan?
76.
76. Nina, you got, so where did you go from there?
I did 83 minus 10 equals 73.
Okay.
And then I did 76.
But we're not taking 10 away, we're taking what away, Nina?
Eight away.
Eight away. So what do we have to do?
We had to add 2 back.
Right. We got, we took 10 away, right? But we only needed to take eight away, and so we took two extra away. So we have to add that back in. And we get what answer?
75.
Good. Now, let me ask you. Did we get the same answer here? Here? And here?
Yes.
So are these strategies good strategies?
Yes.
Do we have to get the answer the same way always? So go ahead, Ryan.
It doesn't matter like the strategy, but you all have to get the same answer.
Right, as long as the strategy works with the numbers, right?
Because we all have different strategies.
Right.
They can't be all the same.
Well, they could be the same, or they don't have to be the same. There's lots of different ways to get the right answer. And your brain may work differently than somebody else's brain, and so your strategy in your head may be different than somebody else's. And that's why we do several at a time, so that if Jake's way really clicks with Jalen, then he goes, oh, I get it. But if Jake's way doesn't really click with Arden, then maybe Kareem's way will click with Arden. So that's why we do a bunch of examples in order to show different ways to get the same answer. Yes, Chloe? Yes, you may, and then we'll wrap that up. So did you, you did it a different way than these guys did. Okay.
So I know that 83 minus 3 equals 80. And then I eliminated the 3 from the 8, so I have 5 subtract plus 5, add 5 plus 5 equals 10.
Okay. 5 plus 5 equals 10. Okay?
10 minus, I mean, an 80 minus 10 equals 70.
Okay.
But I eliminated 5 more than I should, so 70 plus 5 equals 75.
Agree? Agree? Okay. All right.
Which is those two 5s?
Where did she get this 10?
From extra 5, but I wasn't supposed to, I was only supposed to do 5. I did the 10 strategy, like...
Hold on, let her explain. Go ahead.
So I did what Ms. Bender did before, like with the 19, she could add 1 to equal 20. But I did the, and I know 5 plus 5 equals 10, so I got just a random 5, and then I put that 5 back together to get 3.
So there's a couple things that stand out for me. One is what confidence. That little girl certainly knows what she's talking about and is willing to explain it. The fact that we are teaching children to do a lot of this in their heads make it very different than what we've done in the past. Not that we don't use pencil and paper, but we do want children to be able to break apart those numbers in their heads. And the other thing is keep in mind, these are second graders. She really only heard about numbers only a couple years ago. So it's pretty amazing stuff. So number talks, again, is our first approach to improving number sense. And as you saw in the video, students are learning to make sense of numbers by breaking them apart and then putting them back together effectively and using those parts. Number talks lead students to develop the habits of mind for learning, doing, and applying mathematics. Number facts aren't much good unless you know when and how to use them. So next comes the application. This is just what students need to solve complicated problems. In this Part 2 of our approach, which is a focus on understanding and communication of solutions to problems, in this video, you will see two second graders explaining how they solved a fairly complicated math problem.
So this exemplar is called Mom's Purse, and I need to find how much money did Mom pay for the gum. I used a part-part hole map. I know 70 plus 20 equals 90, and 70 was in her, 70 cents was in her purse so far, and 20 under the sofa cushion. And she has 25 cents now after she paid for the gum, and I figured out that the answer was 65. 70 plus, because 70 plus 10 equals 80, 80 plus 10 equals 90. I know 5 plus 5 equals 10, 60 plus 20 would equal 80, 80 plus 10 equals 90. So the answer is 65 because I know the two 5s would equal a 10, and then the 2, and then the 20 plus the 6 equals 8. So it would be a 10. So I, Mom used 65 cents to buy her gum, and I used a part-part hole map because I can see all the numbers and parts.
I agree because I have similar, a similar strategy to them. I know 70 plus 20 equals 90, and 90 minus 65 equals 25. And so, so the 65, so the 65, 65, she, she used to pay for the gum pack. 70 plus 20 equals 90. 5 plus 5 equals 10. 20 plus 60 equals 80. 80 plus 10 equals 90, so 90 minus 65 equals 25. So the pack of gum was 65 cents for Mom to buy, for Mom to buy. Yeah, I agree because I had similar things I did, and I have a question for you. How do you know that 90 plus minus 65 equals 25? Well, not, well, the 90, well, I know 5 plus 5 equals 10, and then 60 plus 20 equals 80, and 80 plus, 80 plus 10 equals 90. So I could just do that in, I could just do that in reverse, and that would equal 25. Okay. Now I get it.
Nice shout-out there.
I don't think that little boy knew what he was up against when he was partnering with that little young lady. I was wondering what he was going to come out with. Question him. Yeah, he did. Good evening, members of our Board of Ed. Thank you again. I'll echo, Principal Legoye said thank you again for allowing us to give you a window into the great teaching and learning that's happening in our elementary schools. So in all three Plainville elementary schools, we love to celebrate reading and always strive to engage our families. In this video, you will see an example of this through Wheeler's Second Annual Moonlight Reading Night. For this evening event, Wheeler teachers and Wheeler retired teachers set up in 12 to 14 different classrooms. Pre-K through 5 students and families rotate through classrooms to have teachers read a book to them or do a fun craft. Included in the rotation schedule is time for students and their families to gather in the cafeteria for hot chocolate and a snack.
Courtney, what was your favorite part about moonlight reading?
I liked going to that Snowman Dabber Marshmallow.
Madison, what was your favorite part about moonlight reading?
I liked the button snowman.
And if we have a next year, do you think you want to come again?
So what you can't really get from the video is just the amazing feel that's in the building that evening when you put teachers and retired teachers in pajamas, students, parents, and families all together, you know, rotating about. It's an incredible evening, and I know we do it in all three elementary schools. So thank you.
So not only are the children learning, the adults are learning all these cool technology things. Good evening, Board of Ed members. Thank you for supporting our Plainville Community Schools scholars. The three elementary schools do our presentation together because we strive to have universal elementary opportunities, instructional prowess, and learning successes. I'm going to share a, we're going to share a foundations video with you. It's a program to build the foundation for reading for children. You will see kindergartners engaging in this learning, and you will see some sightword work and displays.
E S F?
E S F.
What is this?
A vowel.
X, fox.
X, fox.
L, lampo.
L, lampo.
B.
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 Good. Please be careful when you're making that letter B. Think about which direction it goes in.
I remember.
Good. We started the skyline, but be careful. You can always check the alphabet too. Let's tap it again. B. B. B.
You can't turn it out again.
When we make Vs and Ds, remember how they look at each other all day? B always looks at D. So what do we notice about these two letters here?
Oh.
Yeah, we gotta flip them like a pancake. So are you ready? Are you ready Elliot? Lip. Tap it out with me. All right, and spell it on your other side. Lip. If you're not sure where our letter is, say the alphabet to yourself. Naomi is right. Because we're gonna change just one sound to make a whole new word, okay? So I'm gonna tell you a new word. We're gonna change it to. We're gonna change it to rip. So tap it out. One letter.
Let.
In between, right? So that's another way for us to remember the plane line is to know that there's little spaces in between that can let you know that's where your lowercase letters start. Your eight, that's right. Good job.
All right. What's this picture on?
So you can see they're accomplishing quite a bit in kindergarten. Next, we are going to show you, um, writing celebrations which occur at the end of every writing unit in every class, kindergarten through fifth grade, as well as school-wide celebrations. This video is going to show you a school-wide celebration. Um, they are sharing a favorite passage from their writing and then receiving feedback. And then you will see a book trailer which was created by two fifth-grade girls to grab the potential reader's attention.
Is they have to stay away from their families a lot. My first example is that I, I know how it feels because my dad is in the Army. It is hard to add on. Sometimes when my dad is far away, I can't talk to him. In other words, when they are in far places, sometimes you have to mail letters so you can talk to them. This is very hard for some people in the Army.
Awesome. Thank you so much for sharing. Let's give her a round of applause. Awesome. Anyone have any feedback for Mia? What is something that you noticed?
Um, I really like how she used her own hands-on experience because it made it a little more relatable. But what I think could make it, because it was good, I loved it. But to make it even better, um, try to make the hands-on a little more descriptive. Like my dad was stationed in Uganda for five months. Because if it was only like till next Sunday, it'd be like, oh, okay. But four years, then that's a big deal.
Does that make sense? Yeah. Any other feedback or thoughts? Yeah, Paige?
She had good transition words, like in other words.
That helped to move that. That's cute.
So as part of our readers workshop program, grades two through five students participate in book clubs. Book clubs invite students to engage in natural discussions and response to a common book that led to inquiry and critical thinking. They are a great way to foster student interaction, cooperation, and collaboration. Here's a video with fifth graders who will tell you more about book clubs.
My name is Renaya.
I'm Connor.
I'm Eli.
And what are book clubs, Eli?
Are, it is a group of people reading the same book and discussing.
Okay. And what books have you read in your book club?
The Sign of a Beaver and Because of Winnie Dixie.
And what books have you read in your book club?
The Witches and The Classroom Dumb Law.
I'm My Elder. And I Survived the Tenderness.
Okay. And what are some book club expectations?
To read your pages.
And what else?
To be prepared.
Okay.
Always have your book with you.
Include everyone and make sure everyone talks.
Okay. Anything else?
And make sure you explain your thinking when you're writing about your, about your reading.
And what are some ways that book clubs have helped you in the classroom?
They've helped me write better responses.
They help me understand the book I'm writing.
And I read stories that I can relate to.
Okay.
They give me more books to read.
And what do you look forward to when you meet with your book club?
To talk to my partners.
Reading the book.
For everyone to have something to say.
This slide and the next slide lists some of the organizations we support, charities our schools raise funds for. The Pettit Family Foundation, CCMC, and the Rotary Club are also organizations that we support. They're just not listed. Um, usually we have spirit days and bake sales and such to support all of these, um, organizations and charities.
And here's a slide of some of the student activities that go on in the school. We have similar activities in all three schools. Up in the corner, you have a concert with a, actually, it's a first grader leading it. That's not Mr. Bonsino. Says something about why we need him, but we won't tell him that. We have Thanksgiving. We have the next picture of the student councils. I mean, not student council, uh, safety patrols. We have those in each of the schools. On the far right, you see the music teachers. Uh, they, all three elementary schools went to the Arts Awards this year. In the lower left-hand corner is the Monster Run that all three schools took part in back in the fall. In the middle, there's a Makerspace activity, which we all knew Makerspace. This was the cardboard challenge. And on the far right, you see the, um, jazz band performing at a local nursing home. So just some of the activities that our kids involve themselves in during the school year.
So the last video is, um, describes what we do in all three elementary schools. We implement PBIS, which stands for Positive Interventions, excuse me, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. The Look for the Good Campaign is one way we do this. The Student Council leads the two-week campaign which has a strong focus on being grateful, kind, and expressing gratitude. Our fifth graders in the Student Council created this video. So take a look.
Hi. We are the Really Student Council and welcome to.
The Look for the Good Campaign!
During this two-week campaign, every student will write down what they are grateful for.
The kindergartners and first graders will have a choice to either write out what they're grateful for or draw it out.
Make sure to listen to the announcements for some inspiration.
You'll write in your gratitude. You'll hand it in to your teacher, and the Student Council members will put it up in the cafeteria.
Here you go, Miss B.
Thanks, Eli.
If your parents would like to add a gratitude, there will be sticky notes placed in the office that will be collected as well.
What everyone is grateful for, everyone's sticky notes will be placed on large pieces of paper in the cafeteria.
Last year, we had one gratitude wall, but this year, we're gonna cover all four walls.
We will call the Fake Take. You will be surrounded by gratefulness every time you enter the cafeteria.
Over the next two weeks, you'll notice these orange spots at the back. You'll be able to step on them and see what you're grateful for.
I go with my mom because she makes her breakfast in the morning with the cup of milk on the side.
The whole project was inspired by a humpback whale who was trapped in hundreds of feet of crab trap line. Some humans were nearby and helped to free the whale. The whale showed the human that she was grateful by floating around and nuzzling against them, letting them pet her. The whale could have attacked the humans or just swam away, but instead, she decided to look at the good and thank her rescuers. We hope that through this project, you can get yourself out of any of the crab traps you might find yourself in. Crabby-ness is something that all of us feel at times, and that's okay. But the biggest point is that we need to be able to get ourselves out of it. And through looking at the good, we can do that.
This concludes our presentation of the State of Plainville Elementary Schools. Do you have any questions for us?
Does anyone have any questions? Comments?
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, elementary principals, for putting a smile on our faces. Appreciate it.
Dr. Berman, did you have anything else?
Uh, did you want to let the, uh?
Yeah, other than, I'll have him come up if you're done.
I'm done for now. I'm gonna have him say something after he speaks.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Nick, did you want to come up and speak? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the inconvenience that I could not be here at the designated time. Uh, production of Marvin's Room, the PHS play that's going on. Nicholas Costantini, forty-six Tyler Farms Road, Plainville, Connecticut, oh-six-oh-six-two. I had to go be a clueless doctor for fifteen minutes at a play, so I apologize. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Berman for allowing me to speak. And before I speak on the walkout, I'd like to thank Mr. Medic, Mr. Co., Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Farrell, and all of you as well, and the Plainville Police Department for all of your cooperation. A couple of things that I would like to clarify about the walkout as I am one of the designated student leaders behind the walkout. We are holding this walkout in accordance and in unity with thousands of other kids across the country for two distinct reasons. The first is to stand in unity and pay respects to the people of Parkland, Florida, and the family, the families, the students, the educators of Stoneman Douglas High School, and all other victims of school shootings that have taken place. Our second reason is to stand in unity with students and educators across the country as we demand lawmakers to import, to, sorry, this is very hard to talk about, to begin taking action on common sense legislation that ensures that our schools can still be safe. And this is much more than a gun control issue. This is much more than the fact that we don't want to have someone coming into the school and shooting it up. It's much more than that. There's mental health, schools' funding, education. It's about having additional resource officers on hand so that we can have things like this prevented from ever happening. It's much more than just the gun control issue, and anyone who wants to say that it is, that is not the case whatsoever. I'd like to make something very clear and possibly give you a different perspective on what this walkout could mean for students at Plainville Community Schools. Up there under Plainville Community Schools, it says, "Inspire, Prepare, and Engage." I speak on behalf of every student involved in this walkout in that this may be the greatest learning opportunity I have ever faced in my four years at Plainville High School, ever in my twelve years in Plainville Community Schools. We have been inspired by the tra, by the tragedy that has taken place and the tragedies that have taken place before it. We are preparing ourselves for this discourse. We are prepared to take on the older generation who are currently sitting in offices across the country not taking action when it's affecting our everyday lives. And now we are prepared to engage and actually speak up on these issues. There's no reason why me or any other child should be afraid to walk into school and have a deranged psychopath mow down I, my friends, my classmates, my educators. There's no reason for any of this to happen. It is our responsibility as young people who are engaging in this discourse to have these opportunities to express ourselves, to, to utilize our, our First Amendment rights, the freedom of speech, and the freedom of assembly in order to address these issues that plague our society. It is, is, it is so much more than just this issue as well. This is no different than anything that happened with women's suffrage in the nineteen twenties. It's no different than anything that happened with civil rights in the nineteen sixties. It's no different than Vietnam protests. We are the young generation. We are educated. We are being educated by the people in this room in order to prepare for these real-life situations. This is real-life problem solving. This is something that you cannot get in the classroom as well as we do. This is something that we should push for. This is something, and I'm not, uh, inciting that we need to politicize an entire school. The great thing about this is that everyone is allowed to have a myriad of opinions and that we can have this discourse, and people are allowed to disagree, and people are allowed to come to a compromise. Having, having this conversation is so much more important than one might seem. And it's more than a walkout. It's more than the seventeen minutes that we're gonna take to honor the seventeen lives. It's everything that comes after, and it's preparing us, young children in the school system, to be ready for the real world and to have these real conversations and to be able to carry the torch that you are carrying right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Dr. Berman?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank our student speakers, Ms. Lennon and Mr. Costantini, for speaking so eloquently and respectfully on a topic that you clearly believe in. But I'd also like to thank our parent speakers, um, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Blake for, as well, speaking of what they feel passionate about and what they believe in as American citizens. I think this sort of discourse is what makes our country so great, that we can have these, these opinions expressed publicly and respectfully. So I will follow up with any emails forwarded my way with regard to questions about, um, you know, what would happen down the road. But I just want to thank, uh, everyone for their, for sticking to their, you know, their, what they believe in and expressing it so eloquently this evening. Um, and the only thing, um, I wanted to add is on April eighteenth at six-thirty, we'll have a superintendent showcase, and we'll be spotlighting many more of our fine students in the various activities. And I'll be sending out notices to parents as that gets closer. But as we did in previous years, the activities will all be led by our children from musical demonstrations to science and Makerspace. So hopefully, we can get a nice turnout at six-thirty right here in this room on April eighteenth. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Berman. Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent? Okay. We'll move on to our subcommittee reports. Our student representative, Nate. Hi, Nate.
Hi. Uh, athletics, the cheerleading team performed very well at a competition over the weekend and is headed to regionals. Uh, baseball pitchers and catchers week began today, and all other spring sports will begin on Saturday, March seventeenth. The winter sports banquet is Wednesday, March fourteenth at six in this caf. Uh, college planning night is currently scheduled for tomorrow night at six-thirty, although I believe Miss Lamont sent out an email around four today changing that to April fourth. On Wednesday is the winter sports award night. Thursday, March fifteenth through Sa- Thursday, March 15th, through Saturday, March 17th, the play Marvin's Room is gonna be in the auditorium. Monday, March 19th, is the Science National Honor Society induction at 7:00 in Mr. Blanchett's room, 403. Tuesday, March 20th, will be the Spring Sports Parent Meeting at 6:30 in the auditorium. Wednesday, March 21st, will be the Connecticut School Day SAT with a special schedule with an early dismissal. That will also be the day of spring parent-teacher conferences from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evening. Thursday, March 22nd, will be the World Language Honor Society induction at 6:30 in the auditorium. And Fri- Friday, March 23rd, is gonna be the Sweet Affair fundraiser, run by Project Grad and Class 2018, from 6:00 to 9:00 in Miss Caff. And lastly, Wednesday, March 28th, is gonna be Mr. PHS at 7:00 in the auditorium. I encourage all of you to go. It's gonna be a great show. I can promise you that. And then, on a side note, I just had a question for Dr. Brummett. As a student who will not be participating in the walkout, I'm curious to know what's gonna be happening in class during that walkout, and if those teachers, if, like I know myself, I'm gonna be in AP Statistics, so I wanna know, am I still gonna be receiving an education during that period, or are we gonna stop teaching for those 17 minutes while the kids are protesting?
Excellent question. You will be able to receive your education if you choose to stay in the classroom. Classes will run as normally scheduled. Part of it will be advisory, but when that's over, regularly scheduled classes will resume.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Nate. Okay, we didn't have facilities. Ms. Tyrell, you wanna discuss the policy?
I think we have the policies up for final, right?
Yes.
Well, these all say first reading. I think we're doing the first. And our fielders, policy leader's not here.
So, we do have for first reading, several policies that needed minor revisions related to just state requirements, and the school calendar removal suspension. So, we will look at them again next month, and if there are any issues, let us know. As we usually do state in our policy meeting, we have several community members, as well as board members, who are very active and involved, and give us great feedback on their perception of our policies.
Thank you.
And I can just jump in, that probably the most significant change is the suspension-expulsion policy, which now requires school districts to provide a more comprehensive program should students be expelled. The rest of those policies had some minor language tweaks, but certainly, Mr. LaPage can get into the more details next month at the second reading.
Okay, thank you. All right, did you have anything on the turf committee, Dr. Brummett?
No, the turf committee has not met recently.
Uh, the high school, Mr. White?
Uh, the PAC was supposed to have met on March 7th, but unfortunately, there was an overabundance of frozen precipitation on the roads that prevented that occurrence. It may, I think it might have, it was initially scheduled for this Wednesday, but it was moved to the 7th, and now, it looks like this Wednesday might, if they, if you call it, might even be in question, so they have not met recently.
All right, thank you. Tophelan is Mrs. Paul Mary. She's out recuperating. Mrs. LaGore, did you have anything you'd like to report? At the microphone? Thank you.
Our last meeting also was canceled due to that same precipitation and also lack of participation. It is rescheduled for tomorrow evening, if we are here tomorrow evening. If not, we're being proactive and moving into Wednesday night, and if we can't hold it Wednesday night, we just give up for the money.
Thank you. Lyndon, Mrs. Hardy?
Mrs. Seshu, can you help me out here?
Move the microphone down.
Yeah, I was moving it down earlier. No one said anything. I thought maybe I'd get away with it. By the way, there's a nice big check over here. I could, I'll bring that over to you.
Don't touch that check.
We are meeting Wednesday night, so, but we have our Lucky Leprechaun Bingo on Thursday night, if you'd like to come, and I'm trying to think what else. Oh, and the Easter Bunny Breakfast on the 24th, so please come if you'd like to. They were, it was an awesome event last year.
Thank you. Uh, the middle school, Mrs. St. Lawrence?
Yes, we actually had our talent show auditions today, so we had 26 acts to practice, and we have our talent show on Monday, April 2nd, and we actually, our PTC will meet, we're scheduled to meet tomorrow at 7:00 o'clock at the middle school. I'm sure that will be changed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Wheeler. Mr. Bouchelder would just like to thank the PTO for donating the popcorn and their Wheeler Moonlight Reading Night, which you guys just heard about, and in February, they had their Valentine's Day Bingo. It says, "Use huge success and fun for all the students and families." And then, they had something called a Smentzel fundraiser. They made a profit of $71.54, and they're gonna have plenty more of them to sell at future events. You're probably wondering, what is a Smentzel? 'Cause so was I. So, Google is really wonderful, so I'm just gonna quickly read. A Smentzel, it says, are the Smentzels, are the finest smelling pencils you'll ever come across. It says, "Each pack includes 10 gourmet-scented pencils. Then, not only are they made from rolled newspapers, but all the components of the product are made from recycled or environmentally-friendly substances." So, thank you for that. And then, Wheeler has two different steam nights, so the first one is Wednesday, March 14th, for grades K through 2. That's gonna be from 6:00 to 7:30, and then, for grades 3 through 5, same time, 6:00 through 7:30 on Monday, March 19th. And their next meeting is March 28th, thankfully, not Wednesday, right? At 6:00 PM. And I do have here, do you have a pancake breakfast, Mr. Bachelder? You still here? Did he leave? Oh, they have, they have a pancake breakfast. It's either coming up this Sunday on March 18th or March 25th. They didn't really, he didn't really give me which date. So, that's it for that. Let's see. So, next, we have correct counsel, Mrs. Tyrell?
Um, I attended, but I don't have anything specific to report.
Oh, okay, thanks. None of the chairs report. I just want to thank everybody for all the lovely gifts. I liked Mr. Wilford's class, the Tophelan singers. They were wonderful, and especially thank you for all the candy. All right, so now, we're gonna go to, let's see, under new business, we got the board open forum. Does anyone have anything they wish to say?
I just also want to express my gratitude for the recognition. People always ask me, "How long have you served on the board?" I don't even remember. It goes by so fast. It's really a pleasure and honor to be here amongst this group and to see the presentations, to meet some of the parents, so I just want to thank everybody.
Anyone else?
Yes. I had the good fortune this, both Saturday and Sunday, to get out to Wilby High School and see the Digital Devils, our robotics team, compete with schools from out of Connecticut and also New Jersey and other New England states. The interesting thing about this day was, on Saturday, they were, had some good points, but they were not at their best. In fact, on Saturday, they ended up dead last. They got their act together. They worked together as a unit, as a team, under both Mark Chase and Dave Gagnard, working with these kids. They improved on Sunday. By the time I got there on Sunday afternoon, they had really pulled some stuff together. They had gotten, actually impressed some of the other teams that the top-seeded teams selected, selected the Digital Devils to work with them and their, other two members of their team, and they got into the finals. At the first, in the, one of the quarterfinals, the driver got a little bit rambunctious and caused damage to the arm. This didn't set them back. They worked. They collaborated together. They fixed it. They did some additional training, got into the semifinals, and got into the finals, and they were the winning team at the Eastern Regional Robotics, First Robotics, and I think that is such a fine example of students working together, learning, problem-solving, and doing all of these things, and it, I think, is really noteworthy and really is exemplary of what is being accomplished in Plainville Community Schools. And hats off to both Dave and, and Mark for the work that they're doing with these kids and the kids on the team.
Thanks, Foster. Sure, come on up.
We should probably explain it when we introduced, I don't know if this is on, when we introduced the honors choir, but the honors choir is made up of four scholars from each of the three schools. They are chosen by their music teacher, and they meet either before or after school, and they rehearse some of the songs that they're gonna present. Then, the day of the honors choir event, which I believe is in April, they leave the school with their music teacher in the morning. They're, they're all day practicing, and then, they put on a performance at night, and it's truly amazing. And because we've had such great success with our honors choir, we now have an honors band, so we'll be sending four of our children from each of our schools for the band as well. Is that right, four? So, there'll be 12. So, you saw the 12 children today, and when we said, "What could we give the board?", we wanted to give you our, our best and brightest singers who are gonna participate in that event.
Thank you.
Yeah, they were very good. All right, does anyone else have anything?
Crystal? Just expressing thanks for the student performance and for all the appreciation efforts, the Board of Education appreciation efforts. So, this is, you know, this evening, our discussion here and our conversation is really passionate, and in so many ways, it's probably frustrating for people, but it's also really great for people, 'cause this is what, this is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to have difficult conversations, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that expressed an opinion. I think, you know, this is, this is something that is taking place within this country right now. There's a lot of, a lot of concern, a lot of angst on the part of students, maybe at a different level than it has been, maybe it's just gotten to a level, and it's, and it is their future, and I do feel that they have the right to express their opinion. Now, we can differ on how that might come across, but I, I was very inspired by what Nick said and his passion for this, and it gives my heart, makes my heart glad to know that there are people who feel passionate about these kinds of things, 'cause I'm getting old and somebody's gotta do this after we leave here, so it's really, you know, again, I do appreciate everybody's, everybody's passion around this topic, and I know it's very politically charged. This is difficult, this is difficult stuff, and we just need to keep talking. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Crystal?
Um, I just want to thank you for all the goodies for Board of Ed Appreciation Week. Also, Mr. Guarino couldn't be here today, so he sent some cookies from the middle school, so be sure we dig in before we leave.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to throw out that on, let's see, Sunday, March 25th, I think that's Sunday, the jazz band from the high school is going to be playing at Infinity Hall in Norfolk at 1:00, right? I think, 1:00. And it's us and, is it Womago, I think, pretty sure? Yep. And so, they're gonna be playing there, and I think it'll be a great concert, so I just thought I'd throw that out, like, exciting to hear them.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, forward. Dr. Brummett, are you gonna review the special ed report for Sam, uh, yeah, for Sam? 'Cause it's March? No, no, it's not. Yeah, it is March.
I have deferred that to next month when he gets back from vacation.
All right, no problem. Okay, next, we have, we just need a motion for the, for policies that we have on the first reading.
Motion to approve, where is it? Is it C?
Yeah.
Starting C, D, E, and F?
Yes.
As, per the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we have to postpone.
Yeah, and then, I just need a motion to postpone it to next month.
I would still move.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we just need a, do you wanna, do you wanna do this too, or you want to wait for Sam for this, the healthy initiative?
No, this is the healthy food certification. We can do that.
Yes. Okay.
Approval for the healthy food certification. We're gonna actually need to take two votes. We should technically take two votes. One is to participate in the healthy food certification, and the other is gonna be to vote on an exception, which we normally do approve as well. So, I'll make a motion that we...
Do we need to add something?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Motion that we should participate in the healthy food certification.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and next?
And then, motion for the exception that would allow for students to, for foods that were not necessarily in compliance to be provided at events after school hours, that kinda thing.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any motion for H?
I would request that we approve the school calendars as submitted for school year 2018-19 and 2019-20, 2020-21, and 2021 and 22 as the first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. So, we don't actually vote on that, then we just, no, that always confuses me. We'll just say, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we just need a motion to postpone to next month.
I move that we postpone that until next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we just need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion for the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And a motion to adjourn. You want that, yes?
Yep. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.